Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 27, 2019 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Selectmen Slavin, Selectmen Munis, Selectmen Trappiano, Selectmen Titlebaum, Selectmen Bruce, Town Administrator Sullivan, and Town Council Bowen are all present.
Okay, could we have the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Swenson, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
That's Congressman Swenson.
My pledge of allegiance is due with the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, foundation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. All right. Announcements. Mr. Slavin.
Okay, first, I got an email from the President of the Wareham Historical Society. She's quite upset about the Toby Homestead on some of the blogs, whatever, going out there, so I will try and reprise what she basically put together for me to say. She was very upset that people were talking about the Historical Society as if they had some responsibility or control about the Toby Homestead. Just so everybody understands, we'll go through this again, I've probably done this ten times in the last five years. The Historical Society is a 501(c)(3). It's located in the town of Wareham. It is not a board, it is not a committee, it's not a commission, it has no direct ties to the town of Wareham as far as any legislation or any way of doing any laws or anything. Whether the members themselves have individual interests in the Toby Homestead, that's of their own personal opinion, it has nothing to do with the town. The way this works is the Wareham Historical Commission, passed by town meeting, has the right for demolition permits. Any building seventy-five years or older has to go before the commission, and they were the ones that do the demolition permit. If you happen to be unlucky and be in a historical district, then you have to go before the Historical District Commission to get what's called a certificate of appropriateness in order to tear a building down. This is the process, how this happened. They had meetings over two-plus years, there were public meetings, et cetera. Nobody, and I repeat, nobody ever stepped up to try and move that building. The hospital would have given the building to anybody if they wanted to take it and move it somewhere. It never happened, and nobody had any way to do it. The town would never have the income to sit there and maintain the building. If you went in the building, you would have seen that the interior was not viable for much of anything at all. And if you watched it being torn down, you can see how bad it was. The right-side chimney, when the steam shovel hit that chimney, it just all turned to powder. That's how bad that was. So I just want to reveal that the Historical Society has nothing. People are attacking the Historical Society as if they could have done something to control us. The answer is no. So leave the people alone. That's one. Great Hills had their 50th anniversary of opening up. I was there, they invited us to come over. It was a nice event, they do a nice job there, it's probably one of the nicest pieces we have, and I just want to thank them for asking us to come by, and I tried to explain to them everything that was going on because there's always a lack of communication. They were very much concerned about the Wareham Pharmacy, which is located next door to them, opening up and being a social club for marijuana. And I had to explain again that there is no law, there is no rules for social clubs in the town of Wareham. There is nothing the state of Massachusetts has right now either. So the people that are trying to put this together are putting a lot of information out there as if they're going to be opening up shortly and buying the property like in September. The answer is no. Thank you.
All right, Jim?
No, I can wait till next meeting.
All right. Mary?
On Friday, September 13th, a bus to Foxwoods Casino will leave the multi-service center at 8:00 a.m. and return at 5:00 p.m. The cost is $22 and includes a full buffet and $10 in slots play. This is all COA-related, by the way. On Thursday, October 10th, a bus leaves the multi-service center at 9:00 a.m. for the Quabin foliage tour. The trip includes a full-course luncheon, a guided tour through the reservoir, and a visit to the Brookfield apple orchards. The bus will return at 5:30 p.m. The cost of the trip is $84 per person. Reservations for either or both trips are made by bringing a check made out to the Wareham COA at the COA office at the multi-service center as soon as possible. Trips depend on a full bus. Adults of all ages are welcome to come join the trips. Also, a reminder, the Friends of the Wareham Library book sale continues this week, on Wednesday from 9:00 to 5:30, Thursday from 1:00 to 7:30, Saturday from 9:00 to noon at the main library at 59 Marion Road. Also, the Wareham Police Association proudly presents a 2019 golf tournament, September 14th, 2019, at Little Harbor Country Club. Zero eight-hundred hours tee time. Prizes, door raffle, twenty-five teams of four people, a scramble. Per person sign-up is $60, which includes food, sponsors. The fee is $125 to become a sponsor, to include t-shirt advertisement. Proceeds will be donated to Cops for Kids with Cancer. If a golf card is required, you need to contact Little Harbor directly. Rain or shine event, if it's canceled due to severe weather, a rescheduled date will be made. All sales are final. Payable, available by cash, check, PayPal, www.paypal.me/wpdassociation.
Okay. Peter?
I just wanted to thank everybody who turned out for the third annual Meet Me at the Tremont event. It was a really good success. So far, we still got some proceeds coming in, but so far, the tally is about $5,000 towards the scholarship that is provided to students who go to Wareham High School or Upper Cape, Wareham students who go to Upper Cape. And it was a really good event, seemed like a lot of people had a lot of fun, and next year, I hope that the people who couldn't make it this year can make it back, and I hope we get some new people next year, too. And thanks to everybody who played a role in it.
All right, next up, citizens' comments. Anybody here to speak this evening? Oh my goodness. Are you sure?
Going once.
Going once? You're going twice. All right, next up, board comments. Alan.
Yeah, I have one issue that's come up that I believe is a communication problem for us internally as well. We've been telling, at least I have, you know, for quite a while now, that we were going to try and resolve, somewhere down the line, the Verilite Pharmechanis location that was never intended to be a medical and a retail location originally. That was due to the state changing rules and regulations. And the idea was that we were going to probably go before town meeting with a zoning change for medical. My understanding is, unless I've been told wrong from, actually from the Chairman of the Planning Board this morning, that they've decided to put this off till spring town meeting. So that means any change that would happen, as far as that whole situation, probably won't happen until May or June of next year. So for those people that I've told over the last four months, including the people of Great Hills on Sunday, the answer is nothing is going to change for the immediate future. And I apologize, but that was my understanding originally, and the Planning Board decided not to go forward with it.
Jim?
I'll pass.
Peter?
Nothing.
Mary?
Nothing.
All right, that was easy. Let's, I'm going to skip down and go to review the draft of the master plan, and the reason why I'm going to do that is because we have the planner here this evening, isn't he? Come on up. And I want to try to get him out of here, if it's okay. He's had a long day. He's had a long day today, and he had a great last night, was a long night, so let's see if we can get him out of here.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
That's fine. So the reason why we called you is, it was actually Alan who wanted us to review what was going on at this point with the master plan.
Well, right now, we have a draft master plan. Eighty-eight pages of policies and goals and directions for the town that was developed with the assistance of the different boards and commissions that I met with over a period of about a year, with the assistance of SERPED in the preparation of the plan. We held a series of public meetings, went over the previous goals that had been developed in the 1988 master plan, which was the last time a master plan had been done for the town. We developed the plan. At this point, it's ready to be adopted by whoever wants to adopt it.
Well, I think that's us. Alan.
My understanding is under master general law, the Planning Board actually brings us forward to town meeting. You know, whether or not it formally has to be accepted by town meeting, I'm not positive because some towns do and some towns don't. The reason I ask for it is that...
It comes under reports.
We, it's a report, but some places actually require the town meeting to accept it. My concern is that we've not seen anything at all. It would be really nice if we could get some kind of electronic copy. I don't want to kill a bunch of trees for no reason. But the problem we have is, on our agenda also is policy 8810. That's the one policy I didn't do probably about eight years ago when I did all, reviewed all the policies and updated everything. I didn't do that one because that's virtually a miniature version of a master plan for the Board of Selectmen. And I didn't want to go ahead and start to do a revision of 8810 if it was going to conflict with our actual master plan going forward. And I doubt very many people over the years have ever read the 88 plan as well, which was, I think, started work in 1985. So the reason, this is why I asked for it, is I wanted to see something so as we go ahead with 8810, we don't end up with two conflicting documents that don't work.
Okay. Jim, do you have something?
Is that the vision master plan that was done two years ago?
Yes, that's the plan.
Okay, so it's been online as a draft for a year and a half?
Since about July or August of 2018.
Yeah, I thought so. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Mary?
Peter?
Okay, so it's already up there, so we can pull it down and do our review. At some point, we need to get it to the Planning Board so that they can, I don't know that it'll happen for October, though. They're pretty busy, and they've got a lot going on, and they're having difficulty with some of their stuff as it is, so I'm not sure it'll get in there. But we need to at least get it to us so that we can buy onto it. We'll review it. I'll put it on an agenda where we can accept the master plan, and if anybody sees any changes between now and the time it gets on the agenda, and I'm thinking probably the last meeting in September before we get it.
We can make recommended changes.
Make recommendations, and then we'll get it to him, and then we'll see what'll happen if they can develop that, and then we can take it and accept it, and then we can get it off to the Planning Board.
Is that as a document of the Planning Board, correct? It's under their purview?
State law says that the Planning Board shall adopt a, create and adopt a master plan.
Correct.
But there's no penalty for anybody else to adopt it.
That's all right, just wanted to...
The Board of Selectmen has before developed their own set of goals and objectives for the years that they've been in place, so...
That's document 8810.
Yeah, that's document 8810. And that's your own, that's your own suggestion of plan, and we considered that and included it as part of the process of developing this master plan.
Right. Well, typically, what happens, and I've been around, so I can tell you, the master plan sat there on the shelf, I want to say, since 1988 when they adopted it at town meeting. And then it became an interesting document because nobody ever looked at it. In fact, we found it in the dust underneath a thing in our office, and Renee Fernandes Abbott became Selectmen Chair, she grabbed it and pulled it out, and we started to adopt some of the things and start to pick off some of the fruit in it as we were going along during that period of time. And then, of course, it became dust again, and it kind of got left behind. So this is a good update because, you know, things are changing and evolving, as you know, almost daily, as far as the town and everything else is concerned, so this is a good thing. But there's no, there's never been, the Planning Board hasn't been able to keep up to it, you know what I'm saying? So that's why we took it on. That's why it came to us, that's why we took it on. And I think we should continue to do that as part of our plan, that we should take it on. If, in fact, it's something that we want to do, which I hope it is, that we should take it on, and the Planning Board can take it on in their capacity, but it should be taken on by this board.
Yeah, they've already done that. I think they just haven't voted to endorse it. Are they looking for input back from us on it? Are you going to move to endorse it? Mr. Swenson, would you like to address this? Or would you just like to sit there?
Excuse me. No, you can't do that.
So is the Planning Board moving to adopt this?
They're discussing right now the process that they want to undertake to adopt and implement the master plan, and update it as well in the process that they're outlining, and they're discussing at this point. They have not formally adopted any particular master plan or process.
All right, so I'm going to ask the members to review the documents and come up with anything that they want to suggest or any changes they need to make, and I want to have that by the last meeting in September, okay? Go ahead, Alan.
Has the Planning Board set up a timeline at all?
Not that I can recall.
Yes or no? Simple.
Not that I can recall.
Okay, so that's a fuzzy no.
A fuzzy no.
Thank you.
They're pretty busy, so, especially coming into town meeting, they get very busy. There's a lot for them to do. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just so we're absolutely clear, for it to be a valid master plan under Chapter 41, it requires a majority vote of the Planning Board.
Correct.
Town meeting, the Board of Selectmen, other town administrator, other boards and bodies in government have no formal role under Chapter 41. However, many towns do present the master plan to town meeting for acceptance. It still requires a majority vote by the Planning Board to be legal, but the reason for presenting it to town meeting or any other body is for political buy-in rather than some legal effect, so I just wanted to lay that out there. Thank you.
In fact, that's the way it was done the last time.
Correct.
Yes?
I wanted to point out that the state law that the council has identified does not have any penalty for doing it in a different way, of having a different set of elements of the master plan, of having a different process of adoption of it. It's pretty much left up to the towns to, because there's no, there's no penalty otherwise for not applying it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Not to turn it into a law review debate, but here we are. It's not a question of there being a penalty. You know, for example, you won't be fined $100 for having town meeting vote on it, and for example, if town meeting voted on it and the Planning Board didn't, the, I won't call it a penalty, the consequence is that unless the Planning Board by a majority vote votes to approve the master plan, it doesn't matter who else votes on it, the only vote that matters is the Planning Board. So the penalty, if you want to put it that way, of sending it to town meeting but not having the Planning Board vote, is that you won't have a duly authorized master plan.
Correct. Well, and they really have to buy into it. If they don't buy into it, then it doesn't work anyway. I mean, they have to lead the direction as far as development's concerned, so if they don't buy in, it doesn't work anyway.
Their, their, their name is put down here in the implementation of this quite a few times. They're responsible for the yeoman's work in making this, implementing this plan.
Well, that's great. Go ahead.
When you have a master plan that's been accepted, it has a lot of benefits when you're going for different grants and different programs, et cetera, because there's questions that come up, do you have a master plan? Are you following set directions? And the other piece is, you may end up with a cranky selectmen if you don't do something.
We don't want that.
Yeah, they hate to, that narrows the field. All right, so anyway, anyway, I want to thank you for bringing it in tonight and kind of getting this conversation going, because it was kind of, you know, I want to make sure that it keeps pushing and keeps moving in the right direction, and this will help it. And I still want the guys, everybody, to review it and be ready for that meeting in September so that we can make sure they have everything from us, and then if they go to get the final acceptance. And I think we should buy into it as well, so we'll talk about it on that evening as well, okay?
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the more people that buy into it, the better, the plan has a chance of seeing the light of day instead of ending up underneath something covered with dust, which would be a terrible waste of time. All right. Next up would be appointments, reappointments, and interviews. What do you want to do first?
Well, we can do charter review if you'd like. Well, you want to do the two appointments?
You can do them. Get the two appointments out of the way quick, and then we'll do the, we'll do the charter reviews.
First, we have Judy Wetherby, who is, she's here today, and she would like to...
Oh, is she here?
Yes.
Be on the Minut Forest Committee.
Okay. You make a motion? Oh, hi.
Yeah, she's here.
We have an applicant.
I didn't know she was here. We actually have an applicant. A lot of times, we don't have one.
Okay.
How you doing?
I'm doing great. How are you?
Good.
Good. Okay, so I'm Judy Wetherby. I live on Oak Street. My parents owned the property since the '70s. We took it over in 97. Permanent residence, love it here. Right now, I'm a member, board member of the garden club. As you know, we take care of about seven or eight properties throughout the town, and I work on the one at the end of Oak Street, Indian Neck Narrows, and that little island. And, you know, we keep it up. It's the memorial garden for the garden club. So I saw the article in the newspaper about a half a dozen or more committees in Wareham that can't function because not enough people volunteer to work on them. And I said, you know, it's about time to do something, so here I am. I like working outside in the garden, the nature, and I'm interested in the Minut Forest, which is also kind of across the street from me a little bit.
Please use lots of bug spray, okay?
Yeah. The forest, I found out, is over 200 acres. I was amazed that it's that large because it's spread out.
Yeah, it is. It's quite large, yeah.
It's a big...
Yeah, it's a beautiful forest, actually, when it's, it does need some attention, too, so this is good that we get enough people to help it out.
It does, and I think, you know, they're ready to do it, but they can't hold a meeting because there was not a quorum to get anything done.
Yeah, this is awesome. Anybody have any questions?
No, thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope, Judy's a neighbor, know her well.
Okay.
Okay, let's have a motion then.
Okay, I move that we appoint Judy Wetherby to the Minut Forest Committee for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you so much for serving.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Wow. Wow, fan base.
Yeah.
Awesome. All right, next would be Conservation?
Yep, next we have David Hall for Conservation Commission.
Hello, David.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Good. So, I moved to Wareham, well, Dave Hall, 3 U. Peckett Lane. Moved to Wareham about a year and a half ago. I retired from the government, and I saw that there is a need for people on the Conservation Commission, and I felt like I had the time, and I feel like I could give back to the community a little bit, and I have experience doing it. I've worked with the government there 25 years doing environmental work, and then since I retired, been doing more environmental-type stuff, and I figured I could give back something to the community doing this.
That's awesome. I saw that on your thing, it's terrific. Any questions in the board?
You just have to learn to say yes dear to your chair, don't worry about it.
What's that?
You have to learn to say yes dear to your chair, you'll enjoy it.
Oh. I figured the same last name, right?
There's a problem there.
Jim?
Just impressive background, and it's perfect background to be on CONCON.
Well, thank you. Yeah, he's got a good, really good background there. Peter?
No, I read the qualifications.
Okay.
Yep, thanks for stepping up.
All right, that's terrific. Thank you for stepping up.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I move that we appoint David Hall to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2022.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any more discussion?
Is it first year provisional, 2022?
2022, it doesn't say, doesn't say associate.
It's not associate.
Okay.
It's full membership.
Full membership.
Thanks.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
At the Selectmen's Office, they'll give you paperwork, you go downstairs to the clerk, he gets signed in.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is the interviews for the Charter Review Committee. Who do we have out of the list? I'm going to just call your names out first, and we'll see who's here first, all right? Julian?
Julian.
Linda? Mary Ann's here. Robert? Robert's here. Nan Evans is here, okay? And Holly Van Nest? Okay, so she's not here. So this one's here, so, and Julian, Julian, Julian's? Oh, here we go. Nancy Rice? No. And Lisa Morales? No, I don't see her either. Okay. All right, so we have one, two, three, four, 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 right? Okay. So let's, let's call them up one at a time and get the process underway.
All right, we'll start with Linda Scharf.
Bless you. Hello.
So what we would like you to do is to try to tell us why you want to be on the committee, and then we'll see what questions you get, and we'll go from there.
Okay, I think it's important for the citizens of a town to be as actively involved as they have the time and expertise to do, so I'm on a fair number of committees and groups in Wareham, and I would like to continue with this group because one of the things at the last town meeting that was said was that people might be hard to find for this committee, so in case they were hard to find, I at least wanted to put in my application.
Any questions in the board?
One basic one, have you ever looked at the charter and bylaws?
Yes, I have, and I also looked at the last Charter Review Committee's notes that looked like they were done by a robot. I mean, that little character. If anybody else has ever seen them on YouTube, I don't know.
Yeah. It was a fun process. Thank you.
I bet.
All right. Jim?
What do you see as the, what do you see as the true role and process of the Charter Review Committee in your eyes, in your interpretation?
Would you repeat that?
But the role, the role of the Charter Review and the process of it, and your interpretation of what your responsibility is to it?
Well, I know it's the sort of legal document that makes a town a town, and I think that, you know, there could be outmoded pieces of information there that you just might want to clean up. It could be fine as is, but I think it's, would be just good to take a look at what happened many years ago and see what needs to be done to change it, if anything.
Thank you.
Okay. Peter?
No, thanks for your interest.
All right, so do you have anything specific you think that the town needs to do that as you've been, since you've been around and you've been involved in somewhat, have you, is there some things that you can point out and say, yeah, I think we need to work on this?
I have heard some things that I don't know how they would exactly play into the Charter Review, but when certain groups come to town, they say things like, well, if your bylaws say such and such, if they're weak or whatever, and we can come in and do something, you know, maybe something like that needs to be looked at.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right, great, thank you. We'll be doing the appointments in September, so probably, pretty quick, okay?
Thank you, Linda.
Next? Next?
Next we have Mary Ann Silva.
Oh. Oh, another fan base. So could you...
Longtime fan.
Good evening.
Tell us who you are and...
My name is Mary Ann Silva. I'm a lifetime resident of the town of Wareham. I recently retired in April from town government. Three years in regular government and 21 years as the town clerk. Over the 21 years, I would live and die by the charter and the bylaws. So there are certain things certainly that need to be looked at and changed.
Okay. Questions?
Not really, since people may not remember, Mary Ann was the clerk when I chaired the Charter Review Committee.
I was the robot.
You were the robot that they were complaining about. If you ever look closely at the amount of work that was done with that particular group, including the 45 articles the second time around, there was a lot of paperwork.
It was quite a job.
Mary Ann did a great job, just so you know.
It was a long Charter Review Commission.
Yeah, it was.
Eight months to play with it.
I didn't agree with everything, but it was a long haul.
I seem to remember that.
I'd just like to bring my experience, just being part of town government, being the town clerk, like I said, working with the charter almost on a daily basis.
You certainly have some legitimate, you know, where you'd see stuff that...
Right.
That probably, you know, along the way that you had to use, that you couldn't get your teeth around, so.
Right.
Jim?
I'm gonna stick with the same question for everyone. And what do you believe your and the committee's role is in reviewing the charter?
Well, the charter, of course, is what town government is based on. So reviewing the charter is reviewing town government to make sure everything runs smoothly and appropriately, and you're following all the laws.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Peter?
Thanks for your interest.
You're welcome.
Mary?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I'm good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks. We have some experience with her, so we know her a little bit.
Next is...
Just a little. Just a tiny bit.
Fitch and Meyer. Did I say it right? I did. I did? All right.
Fitch Meyer.
Come on down. You're the next contestant. Why don't you tell us a little bit? You gotta get close to that mic, unfortunately. And tell us about yourself and what you...
My family's been around Wareham since I was a little kid. We camped in Maple Park. My father was Smith and Neil, Neil, Smith and Neil Jewelers, many years ago on Main Street. I personally, with my wife, moved our family down here in 87. This is where we raised our kids. We built three houses here, hopefully the last house we just built. And I think this will be my life, right here.
Okay, and why do you want to be on the committee?
I've been around governments, both state and federal, for many, many years. And I am a firm believer, if you don't want to get involved, don't complain. Simple as that.
Okay. Questions to the board?
I think I've been around too long.
Alan?
Robert and I, good, how are you? We served, I think, on that little subgroup of EDIC and stuff quite a few years ago. And just for reference, Robert has been working with Upper Cape Regional role in the, basically, how the actual school runs, et cetera. And he's done a great job. I've talked to Mr. Dutch, and all I hear is positive things. His background and his training and stuff over all these years, I believe, will basically make a really good person to work together. The Charter Review Committee requires people from different walks of life to sit and talk to each other and look at things and come up with stuff. The last time we did a Charter Review Committee, we had too many people all of one mind, and that's one of the reasons the initial first time didn't work well. And I'd like to see a nice mix, and Robert fits that mix really well.
Thank you very much.
Jim?
Basically, again, the same question. What do you believe?
Gotta get up close, Jim. They can't hear you.
What do you believe your role and the role of the committee is in the review? Doing the review?
I don't know a lot about the charter, I'll be honest. But I look at it as a set of rules that the citizens of the town developed over the years that gives guidance to our elected officials on how we'd like to see the town run. That, because of my involvement in state and federal government, that tends to vary sometimes. And I would like to go through the charter with help, of course, and see if we can find ways of fine-tune it and bring it back in line. If it needs to.
Thank you.
Peter?
Thank you for your interest.
Thank you very much.
Mary?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, this is, this is good. You know, the nice thing is to have people that want to look at the charter from an objective point of view and say, okay, this is what we see, and this may be helpful. And, you know, that's, that's, that's very good. That's what I'd like to hear from people, so thank you.
Thank you very much, people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robert.
Thanks.
Next we have Nan Evans. I think that's it.
Yeah, that's it.
They're not here, right?
No. Hello.
Hello.
There you go. You know how to get right close to that thing. Tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the committee.
Well, I sort of, I feel kind of like a newcomer here. But my family actually first came to Wareham, I think around 1960. And we were summer people, but then we got more and more involved. My mother was involved with the library committee. One of my sister's teaches here. And I lived in Boston full-time up until about two years ago. But we've been coming down here, and we've had a house we've had here under 25 years or so, anyway. And I sort of, I was very active in different political things in Boston, and I just really enjoy that. I've retired as a lawyer. I like, I became a lawyer because I like to understand how things work and how they go together or don't go together, and how to make them work the best that they can. That's one of the reasons, anyway. So I had been thinking of, I've been wanting to find something that I would do here. And I saw the article about the Charter Review Committee, and I said, well, I will apply for that. That would perhaps be a good start, so.
Awesome. All right, Alan?
Can I ask what type of law you practice?
I, my practice involved three areas, really. I did a lot of mental health law commitments, fighting commitments, people involuntarily committed. I did employment law, a lot of discrimination cases, some wage and hours, unemployment administrative kind of proceedings. And I also did social security and disability. I'm, I, disability issues are, and mental health issues are just vitally important to me for lots of reasons. And employment is just something I've always been interested in, so those were my practice areas.
So you would understand the complexity of municipal law, because it's different than what most people understand? Municipalities, how we deal with law and stuff is quite a bit different than the normal way.
That, yeah, I do understand that.
Thank you.
And especially from working in Boston, kind of...
Yeah, working in Boston is interesting.
...to, so.
Thank you very much.
Jim?
Same question. What do you believe the role of the committee is in your role on the Charter Review Committee?
Well, the, the role of the committee is really to make sure that the charter is functioning effectively and efficiently. And that means the town is running effectively and efficiently. And one thing that I could see now that would probably need a lot of review is just, there's been so much technological change in the last few years. I expect that there could be a lot of work that could be done on getting, you know, making sure we're using that the best that we can. Not that I'm a great expert on it, but that's...
Okay. Peter?
Thanks for your interest.
Mary?
I don't have anything.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yes, that's terrific. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
As well, okay. That's it, right? That's all that's been here? Okay, good. All right, thank you, folks, for coming, and like I said, sometime in September, we'll make the appointments. Thank you very much. Next up will be the acceptance. We're gonna move down to the acceptance donation and the amount of $2,500 for Joan Lukey Stevenson for the Lukey Playground. I want to do that so we can get that out of the way.
Okay.
Can we get Jackie down?
Huh?
Jackie's been sitting here. Can we get her accessible for the pilot?
Yeah, we can do the pilot program. Is Jackie here? I didn't even see her come... Oh, there you are hiding. You're behind everybody. All right, I'll get you next.
Okay, we have a donation of $2,500 from Joan Lukey Stevenson to who it may concern on behalf... Nope, that's not what I want. Okay, I move that we accept the $2,500 gift from Joan Lukey Stevenson to the town of Wareham.
You got it.
On behalf of the Lukey Playground. Seconded by Alan.
No, they weren't invited. No, they weren't. All right. Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay, next up is, we're gonna do the discussion and talk on the solar pilot program.
Just one second. I think we have a couple of people here from the library who are under the belief that the library trustees were gonna give an update, but...
It's not on here.
I don't, I don't see it on the agenda. Were you invited by the office?
Our chair is currently on vacation, so I can't verify to her, but I'm sure this is what she told us.
No, I don't believe that's the case. Was, I don't believe that's the case. You know what, we can...
Do it under 40.
We'll do it, why don't you stay for a couple more minutes, and we'll do it under another portion of the business? That way you can come up. Because while you're here, we don't want to lose you.
Yeah.
You know?
Exactly.
Let's do it.
You're captive now.
Exactly. You're a captive audience. We got you.
I'll be quick.
That's okay. Hello?
Hello. Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
First of all, since I'm here, I just want to take a second and thank everybody for all the support and the thoughts and prayers that you guys have given me over the past year while I fought the fight on the right side of it, and hopefully we'll keep going that way. But I just wanted to take a minute and thank you all. Okay, I'm here today...
None of that, none of that. I'm here today just to let you know that we have yet another solar project coming into town, and they want to do a pilot with us. And we'd like to put it on the fall meeting warrant.
Okay.
It has already been sent to Derek. But I wanted to put it before you guys, first of all. It's a 15-acre parcel that's gonna have a 3 to 4 megawatt facility on it off of Cranberry Highway. The developer is called Sunraise LLC. And we are in negotiations right now for the pilot, getting towards the end, actually. So I do believe it will be ready for fall town meeting with your blessing.
All right, that's awesome. Do you have, you have everything you need for that?
Yeah, usually we'll, in this case, before we do it, where we'd have the selectman or town administrator sign off on it, but we should have the whole thing set up, so.
Okay.
Be ready for town meeting.
So I'm basically just, you know, here to give you the FYI, this is coming.
Okay.
And to get your approval to put it on the town meeting warrant. Also, the sample pilot that has already been started on is in Rich Bowens' lap for review, so we're moving right along with it. Oh, you did?
Usually the only thing that we're talking about is the price per megawatt for the pilot and such, or...
Yeah, I mean, he's, he usually turns those things around pretty fast. He sometimes amazes me how fast he turns stuff around. So, yeah, okay, that's great. All right, so does anybody have any questions? No?
Do we have an idea when the warrant article will be ready?
It's already done.
It's already done, so you'll be presenting it?
It's already in.
By the 5th, okay? So it's, everything's all done, then?
We're, we're still negotiating the actual pilot, but the warrant and everything is, is ready to go.
Yeah, the article's easy.
Yeah.
Famous last words.
Yeah.
As long as everything's together.
Well, we need to have all this stuff ready early this time, so we gotta keep going forward and being quick about it. We can't be dragging our feet.
Nope.
But thank you. I'm glad you got a, got an early start on this one.
Yeah, well, I wanted to make sure that we had plenty of time to get everything ready.
Thank you so much, and I'm so glad you're doing so well.
Yes, thank you.
It's awesome. Take care now. All right, so let's, you know, we'll do it, I hate to do this. I hate to have them sit here forever. I'm gonna go to 24-hour business. Does anybody have any 24-hour business? All right, so under 24-hour business, I'm gonna have the library trustees come down and give us an update. 48 hours, yeah, sorry, 48 hours. It's close enough. 24, 48. Hello?
Hello?
See, I told you you weren't gonna get out that easy.
I actually prepared a statement.
Oh, that's awesome. Yeah, I'm glad, yeah.
I'll just read from that. "On behalf of the Board of Library Trustees of the Wareham Free Library, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen, our town administrator, Derek Sullivan, and the citizens of Wareham. Without your support, alongside the efforts of the Friends, the Foundation, the Board, and the library staff, including our previous library director, Michael Carlosi, we could not have regained certification on November 1st, 2018. Certification gave us access to approximately 4 million additional books, DVDs, audiobooks, magazines, museum passes, and other materials throughout the Commonwealth, as well as access to grants and state funding we desperately need. Since then, we've increased hours, including additional evening hours to accommodate as many people as possible. We've issued hundreds of new library cards, added new programs and clubs, restored previously existing programs and services, and worked with municipal maintenance to address the backlog of repairs needed in the building. We're also working to develop a new borrowing policy for summer residents as the current policy, created out of necessity in the wake of decertification, seems a little restrictive. Our primary concerns at this time are some maintenance issues and our ability to stay compliant with state certification requirements. In the past few years, the Friends and the Foundation have provided money to meet our materials expenditure requirement, as well as a significant portion of the director's salary, so we could recruit and hire a certified library director, a requirement for certification. Due to the nature of fundraising, these funds can't be relied on, and the line items they support may not be sustainable. Despite these concerns, the library has been having an exceptional year. Circulation and visitor numbers are both up significantly, as is the number of items being requested, being requested by and from Sales, our regional library system. The various clubs introduced by the library director and reference librarian, Stephen Miller, have been exceptionally popular, to include things like book clubs, chess club, D&amp;D club. I've lost count at this point. And the extended hours have almost tripled the use of the meeting rooms. Children's services continue to be very popular, and the staff is working very hard to update the collection. And the new book area seems quite popular. There's usually several people perusing in that area when I visit. With the continued support of the town, we're hoping to exceed all expectations for the coming year as well. I would like to close with a quote from an author who, much to my embarrassment, I've only recently discovered, Neil Gaiman. He writes both adult and young adult books and graphic novels. In a speech that he gave, he said that libraries are about freedom. Freedom to read, freedom of ideas, freedom of communication. They're about education, which is not a process that finishes the day we leave school or college. About entertainment, about making safe spaces, and about access to information. A library isn't just a collection of books on a shelf. The real value in the library is in all the information and the help with sorting through that information that the staff provide. We've had an uptick in people looking for help from our reference librarian, people looking for help online, filling out job applications, things that they can't do at home unless they have access to a computer and the internet. Well, they can get that for free at the library. That's good for our economy if they can apply for these jobs. Because you know as well as I do, most of these jobs, you have to apply for them online anymore. You don't just walk in and hand them an application and say, okay, I guess I'll hear from you by phone. That was the way it was when I was a kid, but it isn't anymore. And we've seen the impact that it's having. We've almost doubled our circulation. And it hasn't even been a full year since the certification. So I think, I think we've done remarkably well. I'm hoping that we can keep it up. I really am.
That's awesome. Any questions to the board?
No, thank you.
Anybody? Wow.
Thank you for all your work.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I remember where we were, you know, five years ago when we were essentially forced to decertify, or we didn't decertify, the state did.
The state was.
Because we were unable to get the citizens to pass an override, and that was, that was a sad day for the town. And I'm very appreciative of everybody who was involved in the effort to get the library recertified. Our former director, our... to get the library recertified, our former director, our current director, who's reaping the benefit of that, the trustees who worked so hard, the other NGOs, if you will, that are involved, because I think we've got a total of three of them that are involved in supporting the library. So, we've got our friends and a foundation and trustees, so it's kind of funny that, you know, for other purposes in town, you might have one outside group to fund it, but the library is such a huge venture, you need three, so...
And we tend to be very vocal.
Yeah, we've noticed that over the years, but we'll gloss over that part.
Isn't it nice?
I know, I know. But it is, but it is, you know, a testament to the work that you and the rest of the trustees have done, so we thank you very much for that. I also understand that tentatively Friday, October 15th, is the date for the annual library play to resume. Last year, they went with a talent show, and I think this year, they're going back to the play format, because we did receive something in that regard.
I actually have that in my bag, if you want me to run, I can confirm that in a second.
But anyway, they already reached out, they wanted Star Power, so they reached out to Selectmen Bruce and myself again, and... I'm gonna make Mary blush.
It looks like...
Couple of bad acts.
October 18th at Redmond Hall, 7:00 PM. The play is called "The Complaint Department and Lemonade."
Yep.
Complaint Department and Lemonade?
Yep.
That's what it says.
That sounds interesting.
So, I don't know if that means they're gonna be serving... Are they gonna be serving hard lemonade out there? I'm not sure, but...
Probably have to ask the Redmen, I think they're in charge of...
Yeah, they are.
Think they're gonna need a liquor license.
Yeah, they might. But I just had to throw that in at the end to try to gin up interest early, so I'm sure we'll see you, and everybody who's involved with the library out there that night. Thank you very much for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you coming and giving us an update, thank you very much. Next up, licenses and permits. We have an application from ACAP Inc., DBA Wines &amp; More, Wareham, 2421 Cranberry Highway, for a change of manager.
Good evening, how are you?
Hello there, how are you?
Good.
Are you the change of manager?
My name is Craig Power, yes, I'm the applicant for the change of manager.
Okay.
Nice to see you here.
How are we doing?
We're doing fine, we got everything in order here.
Anybody have any questions to the gentleman? Nope. All right. We usually like to meet the managers when they come in for a change, just, you know, so that if we see you, or if something comes up, you know, whatever, it doesn't take very long, and I'm sorry that you had to wait so long, but it is part of the process, so...
Yes, it is.
All right, go ahead, Mary.
I move that we approve the change of manager for ACAP Inc., DBA Wines &amp; More, Wareham, and gentleman's name is Craig Power.
Craig Power.
All right, motion made by Mary, seconded by?
Second.
Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
All right. Next, you wanna skip it? Yeah, we're gonna do it right now. No, no, we're gonna do it right now. We're gonna go and vote on the conservation restriction, Stony Run, 600 Main Street. Could you come up, please? There she is. Hello?
Hello, how are you guys tonight?
Good. So, this has all been ironed out now, and we're ready to go.
This has been worked on by the state, and Attorney Bowen, and Derek, and Peter, and our board, the Wareham Land Trust Board as well, so I think that we have the final document that is acceptable to all parties, and we look forward to having this signed. We'll then send it to the state for their final approval. We'll have it recorded, and look forward to seeing you out there as you're trooping around and monitoring.
Do you have the signed copy, the copy for us to sign?
I left it with the...
Is it in the file? Okay, sorry, it's in the file.
There are two copies, please sign both of them.
Always is. All right, could I have a motion to sign the conservation restriction as presented, please?
So moved.
Stony Run, okay. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. We will sign it right now. Give a couple seconds, and we'll sign it.
Well, they need to be notarized as well, so...
Okay, so we'll have to get it to the clerk.
Why don't we just leave it with the clerk and do it there?
We'll leave it with the clerk.
We'll leave it with the clerk, and she will call me and pick it up. One of the things I would like to do is, I don't know if KRC is...
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Ah, Dick Wheeler.
Thank you.
Good old Dick. Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do. Yeah, we'll just leave it, we'll take him, and I'll have her leave him at clerk's office, and we can all go in and sign him, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Attorney Bowen.
All right, next up will be the discussion on 8810, and basically, this is on here because Alan wants to have, review it, and since the rest of the policies have pretty much been reviewed, I think it's a good idea that we allow him to do the review. You can, and I understand Jim's gonna help you, is that correct?
He doesn't know what, but he...
He sucked me in last week.
So, he sucked you in?
I already read it.
So, you got sucked in, right? Okay, well, no, but it's a good idea, let's do the review, and then, and see what you come up with. Nobody has a problem with that at all, so you don't really need a vote from us, you can just go ahead and do it.
Yeah, we need approval from the board to do it.
Really? Technically.
Okay, I move...
Go ahead.
To approve Selectmen Slaven and Minis to do the review of the 8810.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by me, as a necessity. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Okay. Go forth and have fun.
See you in a month.
All right, we're gonna go to the town administrator's report now, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just going over some of the, some of the town meeting warrant articles that will be emailed this week. You saw the one from Jackie. We have the one that we have for every town meeting, well, at least the special and the full annual, for the peg access receipts for Wareham Community TV, and the amount for that will be $275,048.57. So, that's, I mean, that's almost one that can be, I don't know, it'll be up to the moderator, but it's almost consent agenda style, it's just almost automatic for us to do. We do the fall 2019 capital plan. I know there's approximately $400,000 from the school requesting, and a few other items. Our problem is, we need to have free cash available for that. The next one will be transfer of free cash, so guess what, we need free cash available for that as well, but we do those transfers every fall, and that's to the stabilization fund and the OPEB trust fund. Stabilization fund currently has about 3.5 million in it, which puts us just above the 3% to 5% range, so we usually transfer about $150,000 as a maintenance amount, including any, any income from the investments. The OPEB trust fund, we have a little over a million dollars in that right now, and that's based, what's actually transferred is based on a percentage of what we have for, for free cash, so I don't have the amount on that, we have free cash available. This has been a tough year, so we expect it right before town meeting, frankly, for free cash. So, then the other one is, I have a meeting...
As I understand it, the problem's gonna be for the, the new, the method we're trying for voting will be problematic, so there would have to be an amendment, I guess, made, right? Is that what we're gonna end up doing, Madam Chairman? We don't have the figures, we'll have to do it as amendment, that's okay.
He looked like he could do it pretty quickly, from everything.
That's fine. So, that might be the case on that particular issue, since we're waiting for free cash, and I've been there plenty of times when it comes in the morning of.
Yeah, it's tough, I wish it, I wish it'd be sooner, we all would, but, you know, as long as we have it available, and there's no guarantee of the availability, because don't forget, there's, you know, 351 other communities trying to get in there.
Right.
Also, one thing that's on the plate is, we've, we can take a look at a transfer from the municipal facility stabilization fund to start the process for the engineering and feasibility study of a police station.
Okay.
So, we have in that account about, just under $157,000.
Okay.
Those are what I see coming forward, including the, including the one with Jackie for the solar pilot, and then I have meetings with department heads to solidify a few others tomorrow.
Okay.
So, and that's that. We did, there was a, oh shoot, there was a major, a major gaffe that happened with the gentleman receiving the Bronze Star that we, we missed, and so...
That was pretty bad of us, by the way.
Yeah, so...
Huh? Yeah, the notifications, well, you know, to be honest with you, I did get a notification, and I asked somebody, it's my fault, all right, I'll take the blame for the whole thing. It's totally my fault. Nobody else should take any blame for it, it's my fault, and I feel badly, very badly about it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to try and figure out if there's some way we can make, make it up, and, and, I'm gonna try to find out.
Yeah, the first time around, we were notified by the American Legion, et cetera, and usually I get a call as well, so it really was not the normal way.
Yeah, well, whatever the normal is, I don't know, but I know that I was notified, and I set up a process that I thought would remind me, but it, I didn't, I didn't get it, so it's my fault, and I'll take responsibility for it, and I'd like to apologize to everybody for that, and I think I'm gonna try to figure out some way we can make, make it up, and I'm working on that, so...
We can honor Mr. Holmes, yeah.
Yep.
Yep, so just want that out there.
Oh, that's good, I'm glad you brought it up. I was gonna bring it up later on, but, okay. No, that's fine, it's, get out there, you know, I had to, if I'm gonna throw myself on a sword, I'd like to do it like towards the end of the meeting, you know? You know, so I can clean up the blood and stuff, you know? All right, is that it?
Be you.
Next up, liaison reports. Jim?
I got a few things.
Okay, come on.
What's up?
Did you see the look on his face? It was beautiful.
No, we did this on purpose.
Did you see the look on his face? It was funny as...
I'll finish up after you. Just letting everybody calm down here, that's all. All right, so, let's see, we've got a number of things going on. Was at the planning board meeting last night, and they discussed some of the upcoming warrant articles, voted on them, and they'll be coming towards us pretty soon, and there was a presentation aired down by Mr. Swenson, so that was pretty interesting. Met with a citizen, a normal white, she's on, she's putting in a citizen's petition for the plastic bag reduction bylaw, and I believe that's in there, and I've also contacted the recycling committee on that, said maybe they can work together and get some support for it. So, that's going on, and Carver Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge District, so everybody knows, we voted for a sticker fee of $125 for next year. It's a transition year, and the year after, there'll be no support from Covant or CMAAS, and it'll be, have to be totally self-supporting, so we have to move towards that goal. So, we've been doing some discussion on that, and we meet the end of this, end of September 21st, that'll be posted online, so anybody's interested to go to the meeting, it'll be online, the date and time and everything else, and I think it's in Carver this time. We rotate between the three towns. Let's see. That's all, thanks.
Okay. Peter?
This is more from Madam Moderator than anybody else. You will be pleased to hear that the Wareham Redevelopment Authority will not be seeking any warrant articles this fall.
Okay.
We continue to work towards attracting proposals for Littleton Drive, continue to work on possible means for getting the redevelopment plan for Wareham Village going, and deciding which agency or authors we would choose for that sort of a project. So, we've got some irons in the fire, but there's nothing that's come out quite fully forged yet, so...
Mary? Alan?
Yes?
You're on.
Sure.
Yeah, and make sure you get close to the microphone.
Nah, it's no fun, I like Rob yelling at me. Okay, Buzzes Bay Coalition had a meeting this past week, which has to do with the O-Fault project going through the Maritime Academy, which has been going back and forth. They've come up with a few, I'm gonna say, roadblocks, one of which was the possibility of using the land along the railroad tracks going down Route 6 and 28, has been squashed pretty much. The other issue, of course, is we're in the process right now of doing the Route 6 and 28 roadwork to redo the highway, and my understanding is that as they do the project, they'll be doing a section, and actually doing the roadwork and finishing off the actual pavement, and the normal rules in the state is, once something is paved, you have to wait five years before you can dig it up again, so they're now meeting with the state to see if there's some way to put what they call a false pipe down that road, which would allow them to put something through it later on. I don't know whether this is gonna be possible or not, so this project right now, we're hoping it's possible, may have some serious glitches in it. The Veterans Council met this past week, happy to say it went very smooth, and they're actually starting to get their stuff together, and I think that's really all we have. Everything else was pretty straightforward. Starting in September, everybody starts meeting again, and at the state and regional level, we'll have more stuff for you. That's it.
Okay. Next would be approval of minutes for July 30th and August 13th.
We still have some corrections on the July 30th, so we'll...
Abstaining from the 13th.
We'll put those on the next one. I do have the August 13th, so I move that we approve the meeting minutes from August 13th, 2019.
Is everybody here?
I wasn't.
Peter was not here, but the rest of us were.
Okay, motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
Abstaining.
401, 401, okay, and that's it. We will see you at, so the next meeting is two weeks away, right?
September 10th.
September 10th, because we do not meet the day after Labor Day, so everybody can have a long, especially the press people, they can have some, some time off before they have to come back, but then we start our regular schedule, because we get pretty busy, obviously, through the rest of the winter, so we'll be meeting every single week after that, and back on our regular schedule, all right? Summer is over for us after that. Anything else, anybody else wants to add? Can I have a motion, please?
Motion's adjourned.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Mary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you for Wareham, have a great week, two weeks.